Good evening. Welcome to the March 26th City Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. And Mr. McNichol, general orders.
The first item of business is to present draft of the fiscal year 1819 budget. And our CFO, Melissa Reams, will have that. While she's making her way here, I would like to say to you that the entire city manager's office staff is very appreciative of our management people. We have, over the last couple of years, cut 36 percent out of the general fund budget. And you will see a reduction again in some of those numbers tonight, although much smaller than 36 percent. And those cuts only come because of the people we have managing the departments. They have been given a task and they have done great work in reducing and controlling our spending. One of these days, the revenue issue is going to be fixed, we hope. I'm going to put in another plug for you know legislators outside of Payne County. Ask them to vote affirmatively on Senate Bill 337. And with that, I will turn this over to capable hands of our CFO.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We are going to visit about budget tonight. But before we get started, I want to acknowledge that we have a lot of our department heads in the audience. And we have two new staff members with us that are in our finance department. They've joined Christie and I as part of the management team, Ginger Gripe and Kami Coontz. And Christie and I feel very fortunate to have these women on staff with us and to just have more hands at the wheel. So, welcome to Ginger and Kami.
Welcome, Ginger and Kami.
Okay. Thank you, Jasmine. We are going to talk budget. And I know that's your favorite subject, but as the mayor and I were discussing this evening before we get started, the budget is one of your primary tasks as councilors. And so, my job and Norman's job and the rest of the CMO staff is to help you be as informed as you can be. So if you have questions, please, please, please don't hesitate to ask. If now's not the appropriate time, shoot me an email, let Norman know, and we will get you those answers because we want you to be as educated about this process as you can be. We're going to start this evening again with some definitions. The first one is budget. And a budget is simply an estimation of revenues and expenditures based on some assumptions now and we're projecting into the future. So it's, I hope you get from that definition that it is good as the information that we have today because what happens in actuality could be totally different. A balanced budget means that your revenue and your expenditures equal. So when you get down to the bottom line, it's zero. We like that. We talk about two different types of funds. We will refer to these as restricted funds. Those are monies that are set aside for a specific purpose. A really good example of a restricted fund, Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm using the wrong example, is the half-cent sales tax because that is a vote of the people. They have said what that is, its purpose, what it's intended for, and we set that money aside and we can't use it for anything but that intended purpose. Designated funds come more from the governing body. And you, as councilors, can designate money. I think much like you did with the pavement management money in the general fund. You wanted to see those projects funded and get that, get our roads fixed. And so I do think that was more of a designation coming from this body. So those are kind of our definitions that we're going to use as we move through the presentation. There was a really good, probably, thank you, Karen, picture in the paper yesterday of the sales tax chart. And I like this visual because you can really see how things took off from about 2009, 10 to 2014. And again, to help us remember what had happened during that timeframe, I think that's really when the bid was, had started to get some traction. Things were coming to Stillwater and we were getting that, those sales tax collections increasing. It was also a period of boom in the oil and gas industry. And even though I don't necessarily think of Stillwater as an oil and gas town, we are a hub for people to come and eat and stay and spend money in Stillwater. So you can see the boom-burst, if you will. I think it was December of 2014. And you can see that we've done pretty good of maintaining. We've started to tail off, and each year you've seen us tail off just a little bit. I'm hoping we're getting to plateau. And if not, maybe some increase going forward. So, looking at these numbers, I hope that you would agree with me when I set the sales tax equal to what it was last year at 28.4 million. Just an overview, pictorial overview of sources of revenue. Again, sales tax is our largest source of revenue. Other taxes include cigarette and tobacco tax, which is a portion to us from the state, gasoline tax, lodging tax, I'm trying to think of all of them, 911 tax, use tax. Use tax is second probably to sales tax. We have fines and forfeits. If you forget to return the library book, that's a fine. If you park in the wrong spot, that's a fine. Fees and rentals, if you rent a picnic shelter, if you rent a room over at the community center. Licenses and permits, which our lovely city clerk takes care of a lot of those for us. Itinerant merchant license is one of those. And that, that's probably our, well, I don't know if that's our most used, but that's the one that I think of when I think of licenses and permits. Interest on our investments. Interestingly, interest rates are rising. And it looks like we will be getting more bang on our investments for this next year. So Christie and I were excited about that. Grants, grants, that will be federal grants. We get an annual emergency management grant. Those are a little, as I was looking at them, not as reliable because you don't know if you're going to get those or not. And so, I like to tend to book those as they come in and not project that we're going to get something that we may not get. Other is, it's just a collection of a lot of little things that come in. Donations, miscellaneous revenue, and I hate miscellaneous, I wish I could cut it finer for you, but miscellaneous revenue, things that we don't normally deal with are in that smaller category. And then we have what I call elective service revenue. Generally, that was comprised of the golf course. And we've taken some steps with the golf course that's going to change the composition of that as well. So your sources of revenue. Again, revenue assumptions. I left sales tax at 28.4 million on a go-forward basis. I did move use tax up to 1.6 million. I believe actual for 17 on use tax was 1 point, was, it was 1.559. So, we're in the ballpark. I will watch that very closely. I watch that one as close as I watch sales tax. And if I really see it start to tail off, we'll come back to you with a budget revision to get that taken care of, budget amendment downward. The others, again, as I alluded to just a minute ago, anything that is harder to predict, harder, not as sure to receive, grants, donations, this miscellaneous revenue, I really took a hard look. And I hope I wasn't too heavy-handed with that. I tried not to be. I tried to be reasonable, but I don't want us to get something booked in there that we can't count on. And then the utilities are, Dan and the staff with SUA, they do an excellent job of predicting a very conservative outcome for the SUA. Does that mean it could do better? Absolutely. That it could outperform what their predictions are. But it is much better with budgeting to be conservative on those, on those forecasts. So now, we looked at expenditures. And again, as Norman told you, our department heads, many of who are sitting behind me tonight, have done yeoman's work in, in being very frugal and being good, good stewards of the resources that have been entrusted to them. And so, as we continue to look at what does it take to run the city, they are, they are being innovative and finding new ways to deliver services in a really effective and efficient manner. And hopefully, by reducing some costs. And you will, I think you will see that as well. We have our state mandated services that we have to perform, provide, city manager's office, finance, legal, police and fire. Public safety is high on the list. Then we have city charter departments, which is our general government department. Your honorarium for being a city counselor comes out of general government. And then we have the library, which is also provided for in city charter. Mandated by city ordinance, development services, parks and transportation and operations together. I've merged those together. We have support departments as well, and I would not want to try and do my job without any of these folks. We have our public relations department, human resources, information technology, emergency management and animal welfare. And then we get down to what I consider elective services, sister cities. We do continue to support sister cities. The multi arts, we still have a little bit of an obligation there. Community center, and now we have a different type of obligation to the golf, to the golf And you can see, the state mandated, the public safety is the biggest chunk of what we spend our money on. The departments were asked to look at budget from two perspectives. We asked them to start at ground zero again and build the budget. Don't rely on what has happened in the past. But as a benchmark, I gave them a three-year average. So I took their actual expenditures for 15, 16 and 17 and just averaged those. Because if we can get by on that average, why would we build a cushion into the budget? Now, there are times, and they had to write justifications for me for when they wanted to kind of depart from that three-year average. There may have been some one-offs in, in some of those years as well, and so we needed to take those into consideration. Anytime you perpetuate a one-time expenditure but you keep budgeting at that level, it pads that budget as you're going through. So if I bought, let's say, a truck that was $300,000 in year 15, but I just continued to, to make my budget equal to 15 and 16 and 17, there's a padding there that didn't necessarily need to be there unless you needed to buy three trucks, a truck every year. So we're really looking hard at how we budget and what we budget for, really trying to work with the department heads and get them to think about programming, tying back to the strategic plan that you all approved back in January, and back to our standards of excellence as well. Service agreements, we have had some longstanding service agreements with the Charah, the Payne, Payne County Youth Services, the Chamber, Visit Stillwater, Friends of Lake McMurtry and SASSA. And so, really reviewing those, a lot of those are going to come before you in the next couple of months because they are up for renewal. We have also entered into a new service agreement with Henderson Golf for the golf course, which fixes our costs and kind of helps fix our maintenance expenses there. We are looking at other areas where we think service-level agreements could apply, to the public pool, to the motoc, I'm sorry, Norman, motocross track. There we go. Trying to find the right people to deliver the quality product to the citizens. And it may not be that the city is that person. There may be a private individual who can deliver that quality product. Looking at capital, if you will remember, last year, we had no capital, or very, very little capital in our budget. We do have some this year. We need to refresh our, some of our police cruisers, and they need some protective equipment that needs to be refreshed, so we do have that in the budget. And then we need to refresh our computer fleet. It is now approaching five years old, and so we need to refresh that. We've been very used to paying cash for all of these things. And I think in today's environment, I don't know that that necessarily is the way to go with some of these purchases. I think we've got to look at each one of them and make that evaluation. With the computers, we have the ability to enter into a three- or four-year capital lease agreement. And, and I think that breaks it up into a nice chunk. Computers are not something that are horribly at risk. Whereas, police vehicles have that risk there, and it might be better if we own those outright as opposed to leasing them from somebody else. So we're looking at these capital projects and trying to, to make those calls. Streets, we really want to have, and I think Norman's going to speak to this here in a minute, we want money out in the general fund for streets, for repairs and maintenance. We're fortunate that we do have the half-penny sales tax that can cover some of these projects, but we know it's not enough because we're behind already. So looking at that. Utilities, as I said, the utilities, again, they project their expenditures very conservatively to match their conservative revenue projection. And if they do better than what they budgeted, then that's just better for all of us, all the way around. And personnel, it was interesting, you know, we had a retirement in January, and that individual was our go-to person on payroll. So guess who got to tackle that? And as we were digging back through that, it became clear to us that there were some positions that had been budgeted for, maybe they were not needed, or they were budgeted at a higher rate than they should have been. So, Mr. McLennan and I are going back through this current fiscal year, trying to get some of that identified and cleaned up. And then we're going to make sure that on a go-forward basis, those things stay as clean as we can keep them. Payroll's hard. It's like a moving target. And what you think it is right now, five minutes from now, there'll be a new person or somebody will have quit or somebody got erased, you know? So it's that moving sand. You do the best you can with it. But we, we definitely can, can tighten up on that, and we're going to work on that. So, that's kind of how we came at these expenditures. So, our timeline now, as we look at getting the budget approved and, and on the books, so to speak, we will have a public hearing on April the 16th. We're only required to have one public hearing. We will publish in the paper, the big spreadsheet that is not very clear to people. But until I have time to get that more transparent, this is what we're going with. So I will publish that in the Sunday paper on the 8th and the 15th. Then, listening, hopefully, we'll get some folks that'll come and share their input with us, and, and hopefully, we can look at that and make that happen. There are no guarantees, but it is always good to get their input. So then we will bring back the resolutions to you for your approval on May the 7th. And that will give staff time to get it loaded into the system. And there still are some adjustments that need to be calculated. We'll bring forward, carry forward adjustments for you all to approve as well as a budget amendment. And we will be able to start our, our fiscal year with a new budget in place. Questions?
Counselors, questions?
Mayor, if I may, before-
Absolutely.
-get into questions, one of the things that we're very hopeful, hopeful is that in examining the budget, in preparing the budget, that we are painfully aware that we need to spend more money on streets, on roads. And we also believe that once we close out this year, as you know, and is kind of difficult sometimes for the public to grasp, if we have funds left at the end of the year, if there's an ending balance, that ending balance goes back to SUA. And it had originally been budgeted as a transfer. And it may be that we are able, assuming that Mr. Carnes says that he's able, to come back to you, we are very hopeful we'll be able to come back to you in maybe July or August, and say, here's some additional funds that we have found by going through the end-of-the-year process, and we would like to spend it on these specific roads. So, again, this is a very conservative approach that we're taking. We believe that that, after examining some history of the budget process here, we believe that we need to be conservative in what we do and not expect that revenue's going to be exactly what we predicted to be. So we'd like to close out the year and then hopefully come back to you with some happy news, so.
I think that's good news. Vice Mayor?
I do. I have a question. I'm, I have been impressed over the last several years with the work that the staff and the administration have done, doubling up, cutting, trimming, trimming, trimming. And, you know, it's really nice to hear about trimming. Is, and financially, is that sustainable? But more importantly, personnel-wise, is that sustainable going forward?
We are definitely analyzing that as we look at these personnel. We, I have a packet of requests for additional personnel on my desk that the CMO is going to review. Is it sustainable? We're getting into the muscle now. You know, we're, we've cut through the fat and we're kind of getting into the muscle because there is a certain level of service that we want to provide, and it, sometimes it takes more than the hands that we have on staff. So we've really got to take a hard look at that.
I also think of the people that we have as assets that we-
Absolutely.
-don't want to-
We don't want to lose them.
And they, they are our number-one asset, and they are loaded up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I was reading, you know, what kinds of things to look at when you look at a city budget. And one thing that I don't know that I've ever asked before is about the, the fund balance, the difference between, and it seemed that what I was reading, there is, there were recommendations by sizes of cities for that percent. Do we, do we follow a certain-
We have a guideline that the GLFA puts out. It's their best practice that we have three months of either revenue and/or expenditures on hand. We do have an account at OMRF. We are overfunded in one of the, it was our defined benefit plan. And so, that's invested and it's growing, and we, we view that, Norman and I and the rest of the CMO team, as part of our general fund reserve. And it's, it's like having your Visa card frozen in a block ice. You have to really want it to go get it. The other thing that I think, while it's not in the general fund, but it is something that benefits us greatly, is the wonderful structure that's in the SUA. You have rate stabilization, the electric rate stabilization fund, you have the water, waste management and wastewater funds. Those funds provide insurance, if you will, they're self-insured for things that happen. And I know Mr. Blankenship likes to tell the story about, I think it was a transformer that went down, and it cost, what, a million dollars to replace? Our ratepayers didn't know that anything had happened because we had the money, we didn't have to adjust the rates because we had the stabilization fund. And Lauren Smith came to you, I believe it was at the last meeting, and gave you a kind of an overview of, of some of the projects that we're going to be able to do using the electric rate stabilization fund. Water and wastewater are self-contained funds, so any of the projects that they do is all within their fund, and they have the, the money to take care of those things. That's how we're being able to do Water 2040, the ability that they have to go out and borrow money and, and pay it back through those funds. Waste management has a separate little, what I call, stabilization fund. It's going to cap out at a million dollars. And again, we lost our-
Street sweeper?
And we paid for that out of the rate stabilization fund for waste management. So again, our taxpayers did not know, or our utility customers did not know that that had happened. So those, to me, are, they aid in minimizing some of the fund balance that we might be required to have in the general fund. The other thing that, here in Stillwater, is we try and only transfer over from the SUA what we need to make the general fund zero. So it really carries, with the exception of this money in the OMRF fund, it really carries a zero fund balance within the fund because we move the money back to the SUA.
That reserve is currently about $15 million. The most recent policy that we could find from council was 13 million. In what you were reading, I assume they recommended about a three-month operating reserve, and that's what we have. And there is a period of time on June 30th that the fund balance goes to zero.
Yes. If you blink, you miss it. Thank you.
Other councilors?
So, I mean, overall, this is just, just almost 7 percent reduction in the budget for this fiscal year. But some of the department cuts are much steeper. I'm just looking at things like parks and rec by 30 percent, public relations by 30 percent, the fire department by 10 percent. Can you maybe explain a little bit more about how those cuts are made and what effect they're going to have on those departments?
Right. Public relations facilitated some of the purchases that we needed to make to outfit the airport. And I know Mr. Johnson's out in the audience. I believe FAA regulations prohibit us from buying equipment in sole support of one airline. And so we had to do that through public relations with the marketing and through general government to buy that equipment and provide those marketing services. As we've met those obligations, because we will be two years now with American Airlines in August, we are able to cut back, especially in the PR department, on the marketing budget for the airport. I believe we budgeted, I want to say 35,000 to continue that marketing effort for, solely for the airport. In the area of parks, we are, we have gotten the motocross track moved over to SASSA, so that, that was an expense and a revenue there. We have also, I think we are very close to getting the pool turned over to be operated by the YMCA this year. We're very hopeful with that.
Next meeting, if the council approves it.
Okay, okay. So, those were some large expenditures in that parks and rec budget. There was also some personnel costs in there that were probably higher than they needed to be in the prior year, and so we are taking a hard look and, and paring that back as well.
And at the risk of not mentioning one department manager over another one, Chief Bradley came up with a way to reduce overtime by adding three employees. That may sound unusual, but he's proved to us that he can get it done. So, there are those kinds of things that have occurred, that have reduced costs in a lot of departments.
So, in these departments with some of the big, big cuts, where are there potentially large service issues that may come up with them? Or do we feel like these are sustainable, given the-
I think the ones that you've mentioned, the parks and the public relations, those cuts are sustainable.
So general government by 37 percent?
General government, again, has the MRG in there. And it, remember, it was a declining MRG. So, we have left it static for this year, for this coming year. I'm trying to think what else is in there.
What's the MRG?
The Minimum Revenue Guarantee to American Airlines.
It was substantial.
Yep.
Yeah. And then the equipment was also in there, Counselor Joyce, as we needed to have it provided for differently.
How about 20 percent to development services?
I, I don't remember-
I don't remember your budget in particular.
Come on in.
Come on and help me.
Paula Dennis in Development Services. A couple of the things we had were, we had set aside some funds for sidewalk covenants and potential design for those, and then the homeowners associations would pick up the actual cost. So we let go of those funds for the designs for those sidewalk covenants. We also have, the taxes are paid through Development Services Department for all of the NRCS stormwater detention facilities that are built around town. Instead of each and every property owner in Stillwater getting a tax bill to help pay off those flood prevention ponds, for lack of a better term, the city chose many years ago to pay the taxes instead. So those are continuing to be paid off, and so we were able to reduce some of our costs in that manner also.
Do you feel like the cuts are more administrative and cleaning up budget items than they are actually reducing what you guys are going to be able to do with your...
Yes, I do. We have the positions that we need, and, you know, we're really based on the market, how development in the community is going. And if it's going really hard and fast, then, you know, we may need to come back to you at some point. But right now, we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Councillors, other questions?
Well, to speak to that concern, Councillor Joyce, we met with our managers not too awful long ago, and promised them that if they needed a mid-year adjustment, that we would look long and hard at that. And obviously, there are things that sometimes happen that are completely unpredictable and completely out of someone's control, and it is our intent to, when we hear a department manager cry for help, to move in and help them.
Well, my last question then would be just the increase in IT is, I assume, due to the capital expenditure on new computers?
Correct, correct. And I budgeted that as if we were going to pay cash for those items. Brad Stewart, our director of IT, is working on getting me those quotes for that capital lease program. And I really think with the computers, that's the direction, at least that I would like to recommend that we go with that. And then there'll be a provision in there, much like, I think, with our Waste Management trucks, that when they get to be a certain age, they can come in and assess their value, and then we could trade them in. So it just becomes kind of a revolving lease, if you will, but at least the amount's fixed and we can anticipate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All my questions, I appreciate that have been asked, and you know, Melissa, I've been in your office because I have to have a one-on-one sometimes on all this. But I just want to take the time to say thank you to you and to Christie and your staff for making a very complicated budget a lot more understandable for those of us who don't live it every day. And thank you to each of the department and management team members that came tonight to represent, and to also, you also looked at your area seriously and made this budget possible. So thank you to each of you for doing that.
And I will, and if there's nothing else, with more of that, which is, after being here for five years and watching the budget process for five years, we're better today than we were five years ago by a lot. And if you look at the budget amounts from '17, '18, and now '19, you see that we're operating on less money, but we do a better job, because we have good staff, good talent, good talent who work for our administrative teams and our managers and the staff, so.
It also allows us to see where we need to grow. When you have a very good budget, it's great that we're stable, but it also allows us an opportunity to really maybe think more strategically about what we need to focus on
Right.
for the next few years in order to, I mean, we don't want to just sustain.
Right.
That's not what our goal is. Our goal really is to grow and have that development happen. So it also allows us a chance to plan.
Absolutely. So thank you to everybody who's out here, and we're proud of your work. And we know it's not easy, and it's certainly not easy when you have to decrease every year, but we have risen to the challenge. And Mr. McNichol, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say thank you, but it's truly a team effort, so.
You lead the team. That's only why I said it.
I'm just the coach. They're the talent.
All right. I guess that brings us to item three. Mr. Norman?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307(c)(10) for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. To enter into executive session, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we are now going into executive session.